This meeting to order. It is the regularly scheduled planning commission meeting. Today's date is Tuesday, November 13th, 2018. If you'd all please rise and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I see that we are being recorded remotely, so thank SCTV for providing that service. Now I'll take the roll call. Please say here if you're here. Holly Bem.
Here.
David Bloomey.
Here.
Erin Levitt Smith.
Here.
Craig McCormack. So Craig emailed myself and Mike that he wouldn't be here tonight, so he's absent. Alan Needham. Here. William Rice. Present. Elizabeth Burt.
Present.
Rich Cortez. Absent. Gary Lungarini. Absent. One, two, three, four, five. Okay, Elizabeth, I'd like to seat you as a... Okay, Dave, you're full, right? Yeah. Elizabeth is the only alternate here. So I'd like to appoint Elizabeth Burt as a regular member for tonight's meeting. Give us a full complement of commissioners. All right. And we have some minutes to approve. Mr. Needham, if you would lead us through that, please.
Yeah, I got it. Okay, so regarding the minutes of October 23, 2018, anybody spot anything on page one?
I do not.
Nope.
No? Page two, saving paper on the flip side.
Nope, nothing for me.
Okay, I didn't either. We good?
Yep.
Page three.
Could we just go back a minute?
Yep, page two.
To line 60. I don't remember that you said exactly that, Commissioner Needham, that it comes to the balance between homeowners and commercial development. You're on the side of...
Actually, I didn't say that.
Right now, I thought that was...
No, I didn't say that. I said that I always consider homeowners.
Right.
Thank you.
So you wanted rewritten on line 61?
I would say that he always considers homeowners. That's really what I said. Doesn't mean I side with him, but I consider it.
Okay.
I went on to say that for this proposal, I thought that commercial development there, considering, even considering homeowners, was appropriate.
Do you want to have the minutes revised to say that?
I think that's more than we need, you know?
Okay, so we'll just strike is on the side of commercial development and insert always considers homeowners.
Yes.
Okay, Tammy?
And line 65, really 66. So I gave a kind of garbled suggestion to amend, saying that we could refer positively, pointing out that the needs of a homeowner should be appreciated or respected or whatever. You, Chairman Rice, said something else, and you put that into the wording, and you did not say buffering of the property was already considered in the minutes. That doesn't make any sense. That's not what you said.
I think maybe the application.
So I think the wording was quite different. In fact, there is no wording here.
What's your suggestion?
So line 69 says Needham stated we should reword and give a positive referral, so we never got the rewording of the motion.
Into the minutes.
Into these minutes.
Wouldn't you check the tape?
Yeah, let's check the tape and let's add wording for the actual amended motion.
And we could, you could table voting on these minutes until the next, your next meeting?
That makes sense.
So these staff will view the recording and then they'll get you that, what was said, so you can vote on the amended minutes at that meeting.
As well as the statement by...
As well as what you pointed already. If that's okay with the commission?
Yeah, because the motion has to be there.
Good catch, Elizabeth.
Definitely.
Anything else?
We're on page three.
All right, I'll make a motion to table, considering the minutes until next meeting, to allow staff to review the tape of what was actually said when it comes to line 61, 62, as far as what Mr. Needham said. And also line 69, need to include the actual amended, the wording for the actual amended motion.
And also 66 and 67, what you said.
Oh, yeah. And 66 and 67 with regard to what Chairman Rice said. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, good job. Now on to old business. We have no public hearings, no applications, but we do have a referral. CGS 8-3A referral to the zoning commission for a zoning commission application number 8-59 of Joel D. Weisman and Gerald Royzman. Agents 241 to 245 Hop Meadow Street LLC owner for a zone change from I-2 to B-3 on the property located at 241 through 245 Hop Meadow Street. Assessors map F-16, block 116, lot 003B. And let's just be sensitive that the zoning commission will be having a public hearing on this issue on December 3rd.
Correct.
Okay, so do we have representative or the applicant that would like to speak?
Yes, please do.
Just please tell us your name and your address, if you would, please.
I'm Richard Meehan, Meehan Gooden, engineer for Bears and 387 North Main Street, Manchester, Connecticut. I'm here, Joel asked me to be here instead because he's on grandpa duty, his grandson is a concert in New Haven, and so he asked me to be here. The, it might be easy if I just, he had sent a letter, I think, to the commission, to David Rogers, Ryan, and it outlines his issue. His property is the Farmington Valley Racquet Club and the small 10,000 square foot office building adjacent to it, 241 and 245, Hop Meadow Street. They lost their major tenant in the office building in 2013 and have found it virtually impossible to get any interest for the standard uses that are allowed in the current I-2 zone. The tennis club is very, very successful, generates 300 cars a day coming back and forth, but they just can't seem to get the office building rented. They, they feel they have more flexibility if they can change it to a B-3 zone. I took the liberty of passing out this little small blow up of your zoning map. You have the zoning map, I see that Mr. Glidden gave you one, but I took the liberty of doing a blow up of it. It's circled in red. It's this little I-2 surrounded in a sea of other uses, of B-3 uses, some retail, there's lots of residential. And if you look at the zoning regulations for an I-2 zone, while they certainly will allow office buildings, research laboratories and warehouses and grain sales, sales of underground storage of fuel and the like, it's certainly inappropriate for that 10,000 square foot building. What they'd really like to do would be to get some personal service tenants in there. That would be the easiest way to do it, but in order to do that, they have to be a B-3. Your regulations are very, very town and user friendly insofar as, once they do go and get a B-3 and they go to do anything, they're going to have to go back to the zoning commission as of the design development district essentially under Article 10, Section A. So the controls are in place, the flexibility is in place for the orderly development and the orderly placement of tenants in the building. I did, I was handed, Joel did hand me a copy of the plan of development, Simsbury Plan of Development, 2017, and he said, "Look, we went to Section 91B of that 2017 plan of development." He says, "This is what I'm asking the town for, to maintain positive relationship with the local business." He's a local business, been there forever. "Maintain existing businesses and help support their growth and expansion in Simsbury." He needs to get that building rented. Certainly, he's been trying for, like I said, three years, four years. It's been unsuccessful. He feels if he can get a change to a B-3, it'll certainly open up his opportunities. I'm ready to answer his questions. I know, I did the survey for the property, so I can answer any questions about that, and I've discussed it with, discussed it with Joel, his dilemma, and so if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Do you have any idea what options Mr. Weisman would be considering for new tenants?
Well, personal services would be the best. Medical arts, it seems to be something that he has his eye on, and I think he'd like to have medical arts in there, and personal services. I mean, there's a retail, there's a big residential retail development going on on the street. Looking for something that would be compatible to that. I mean, he's got what is essentially an office building there. You know, they're not looking to tear down and build a shopping center. What he wants to do is do something in that office building.
He couldn't put medical in his current office building?
My understanding was, no, he couldn't.
Because medical, medical offices is actually a specific use, since Simsbury has permissive regulations. When you call out something specific, if it's not allowed in the zoning district you're located in, you can't pursue that use. So example being, I-2 zoning district, all the uses allowed in the I-1 are also allowed in the I-2, and that's above, Richard, is a copy of, just a blown up version of the map. In the I-2 zoning district, professional offices are allowed, however, medical offices are not allowed. If they wanted, I mean, there are the two options, if he really wants to pursue a medical office, is either A, go for the zone change like he's doing right now, or B, a text amendment. That would mean that medical offices would be allowed in I-2 zoning districts throughout the town. So he elected to pursue the zone change.
Is there a definition of personal services in the regulations?
Personal service, there is a definition. It's a very broad definition, basically the keeping of oneself, so anywhere from being like a barber to a tailor, keeping of your clothes, nail salon, tanning salon, those are all considered personal services. It's kind of a large umbrella that the personal service uses are.
So why not go for a text amendment to allow medical? To me, that seems a little more of a...
I think he's trying to cast a wider net than medical.
And maybe to follow up on Mr. Meehan, as I had met with Joel about a week, week and a half ago, he also indicated to me, I don't know if it's in his letter, he has been approached by other users, such as an individual wanted to open a retail antique store here, because it's zoned industrial, retail sales are not allowed. He also was approached by someone, and that's where the medical comes into play, looking for medical office. And once again, because it's zoned industrial, you can't do those uses. So he's kind of stuck in a place where, looking at office space that's available on Route 10 right now.
Yeah.
There is a lot of office space that he's competing with, that unfortunately, since the Hartford left, when the Hartford was here, you saw little spinoff businesses that were complements from the Hartford that would occupy all these spaces along Route 10. Now the big user's gone, you don't have that spinoff industry that was here. So you have these vacancies, and some people, if they're zoned business, they're having the ability to read adaptive, reuse the space. Others, such as Joel, has been stuck with, he's competing against, you know, he has 10,000 square feet of office space in the building, if that's what he said in his letter.
10-7.
10-7. Job Insurance has about the same size of vacancy. Powder Forest has the same exact vacancy. Milpon is a little, I think it's closer to 7,000 square feet, and there's a few other locations, just in the general, half mile radius of this property, exactly the same office, professional office space. So he's been trying, it's just economically, he hasn't been able to find a use that fits our current regs.
Could I ask you a question? You mentioned B-3 would include some retail sales such as antiques. What other types of retail shops would be, or B-3, is that general retail?
I actually attached the regs.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I gave you a copy of the regs. So the B-3 zoning district allows all the uses in the B-1 and B-2. So there is a whole host of...
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Commercial uses that are allowed.
Restaurants.
Restaurants would be allowed.
Taverns.
Yeah, taverns, yeah.
Now granted, the catch with this is, any use that he proposes for this building, we will be looking at parking regulations, just to make sure that these two, the tennis center and new user, could cohabitate with the existing parking facilities. Our regs require that, you know, your total number of parking spaces have to support both that place of assembly or the recreation area of the tennis center, along with the professional office for whatever's in that 10,000 square foot box. So there's, there's some limiting factors to the scale of development, as long as the tennis center, which is still a very viable business, is there.
I have three questions. Excuse me. The other limiting factor is the building itself. It doesn't really lend itself to a tavern.
Right.
Or anything of that nature. It's an office building. It's clearly an office building, designed as an office building, and it works and is functional as an office building. So that's the kind of, he's, I mean, he's locked. This is a textbook case on why he needs to have that zone. I also note that right just immediately to his south is a B-3 zone as well. And so it just, like I said, he's a, this little oasis of I-2 and a sea of other reasonable uses. So it's like a leftover.
Elizabeth, why don't you go ahead?
I have a bunch of questions. I think we just approved a B-3 for a building nearby in a similar situation.
We gave a positive referral, yeah.
Let me ask all three questions, because they're all related. So the tennis club, I assume, is I-2 or B-3?
It's I-2.
It is I-2.
And it's permitted, a tennis club is permitted in an I-2 zone.
I see in the letter that the current owner is thinking of selling it so that it would have an owner occupant.
Yes.
Does he have prospective buyers?
Yes, he does. Or you have to, or you have to buy her for the tennis club.
Right, and my third comment would be, I guess going for a change in the zoning regulation, which would allow I-2 to have a business, would impact the entire town, not just your lot. So it makes sense to me that you would change just your property.
It's more, it's more targeted if you can just change the zone for this lot, as opposed to the town line, you know, wholesale. Justification for a medical office, or whatever their office is going to be, in every industrial zone. A little more cumbersome, but...
The tennis center is zoned what now?
I-2.
It's a permitted use.
Okay. Are we, is this application, does it include the property that the tennis center is on? So is that a permitted use in B-3?
It is.
It is.
It won't be a non-conforming?
No. It's a multi-use, recreation is allowed in a B-2 zoning district.
Right, so if someone went to the zoning commission and wanted to put a tennis center on a B-3, the zoning commission would consider it with the standards set forth in Article 7. So there's a list of requirements that have to be satisfied.
Oh, yeah.
So there's a potential buyer for the tennis center?
Yes.
And what do they want to do with the tennis?
Tennis center.
Tennis.
Wouldn't it, wouldn't it make sense to change the zone for the tennis center also? At the same time?
They're trying to make the entire, they're trying to make the, I don't know, you can see it on this thing, you can see where the tennis center, it's sort of like a shadow in a photograph. It's an L-shaped building, and then the smaller building is off to the northeast. Oh, who's got that?
Ah, I was just trying to... So this is the tennis center here. So that entire, oops, let's close that.
Secrets.
They're doing a good job for a while.
That entire box, that purple box, will become red.
That will become B-3. Essentially, just extend the B-3.
The owners, the owners.
It's the same owner.
Current owner.
Do we have separate letter for that?
It's the same owner.
Only in plus the office building.
So they're doing the whole thing. The office building's the driving factor why he filed the application, that's why.
He needs to fill that office building, is what he really needs to do. I mean, the tennis, the tennis center is a viable, profitable business. It's a great service to the community. I mean, people come all over to play there. So that, that's going to stay as is. He needs to do something with that office building to make it more viable, increase its market.
For example, orthopedic surgeon from when they twist their ankle at the club.
Precisely, our physical therapy.
Yes, for example. One stop shop.
As far as parking restrictions go, if that wasn't a tennis center anymore, combined it with whatever would be next door, there's considerable parking.
Yeah, you'd always have to satisfy the parking requirements, regardless of what's in there.
Yeah, I'm saying, but the parking limitations don't necessarily preclude a totally different type of business, because you may not have a tennis center there.
Yep.
I'm a little speculative, I admit, but...
Any other thoughts, commissioners?
I regret not having met the applicant. I always think that's a good idea.
He's doing grandpa duty tonight.
I have a grandson, too. He's up to something.
He would love to have been here.
Okay, I'm assuming that you're here in his stead, as you stated, and this commission did request the applicant come before us, and we kind of tabled this application at our last hearing.
Ah, okay. I don't know that he was really aware of that, otherwise I would have told him not.
Well, he knew it was rescheduled.
Yeah, I knew, yeah.
He should have known that.
Well, we have to take every, every application on its own merits, okay? I think this is an appropriate application of the POCD.
I agree.
It does certainly open up this property to other uses, okay? So I'm all for the businessman filling his, his, his building. So I'll make, I'll make a motion to return a positive referral to the zoning commission and find that the application is consistent with the Simsbury Plan of Conservation and Development dated 2017.
I second.
Any discussion?
I don't have a whole lot of trouble with this, but I have a little. It's not just filling his building with new tenants, it's that for all time, it's rezoned, and you can tear down both buildings and build all kinds of things now.
Yep.
That's the risk.
You could tear it down and do a utility storage lot.
Yeah.
You think so? I mean, if you really think about it.
No, do I think that'll happen?
If you really think about it...
No, you won't make any money on that.
Well, the regulations say you won't make any money the way it's going, it's going now either. He's losing money.
I'm just saying that's the other side of the equation.
I understand.
That's the risk you take.
I was on a planning and zoning commission, I understand.
Yeah, we try to, you know, make sure we're not negatively impacting...
I know.
...other, other businesses, residents, the town, so, but, okay, any other discussion? All in favor of the positive referral, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, on to new business, receipt of new applications. I see there's none. Has that changed, Mr. Glidden?
You have one coming on a potential four lot re-subdivision of West Mountain, however, the applicant is still working on plans. We had some issues with demonstrating buildability for lot design because of slope, and also for his road. His road was going in an area that the road was exceeding 20% grade under the street as highway standards. He cannot exceed 10%. So that is a real application that's coming to you in the upcoming months.
Whereabouts on West Mountain is that?
Yeah, I was just, is it near what we just talked about?
Yes, it is.
I thought so.
It comprised of actually two lots. He's combining two lots to create four.
Where's that, Alan?
The thing next to the car dealer that we just did.
Thing next to the car dealer.
It's in the area of...
Mr. Greenberg was here, remember?
Intersection of...
Maureen and West Mountain?
West Mountain.
Which side? Opposite Maureen?
West side of Maureen, so opposite, west side of West Mountain.
Coincidental, don't you think?
Going up towards the hill. But that, that's an application that is still, you know, preliminary with staff and awaiting for actually an application filed with the commission, but you have someone out there that's doing a residential subdivision that's planning on coming to meet.
Also saw some tree clearing more north on West Mountain, across from Onion Mountain Park.
That's the...
Well, that's the, that's...
State forestry project.
They're...
Timber harvest.
Yeah, they're doing that for the health of the forest.
That's separate from the Onion Mountain, you know, forest stewardship that's been talked?
The state of Connecticut.
State of Connecticut.
The states one side where the...
Built a road into the forest.
Built a road into, kind of like what they were doing of Great Pond?
Exactly.
Yes.
It's all part of the same forestry management plan for the state.
They aren't going forward with the Onion Mountain. Is that correct?
So the Onion Mountain plan received a determination as of right activity from the Conservation Commission, however, it was, action was tabled, this was about when Jerry Toner retired. Since then, the town has not pursued that plan, but there's a positive referral from Conservation of the Board of Selectmen that is on the table for those activities, but really, I think the forestry management plans itself, I think are going to be on hold until the town starts dealing with the open space master plan. The RFQ has been issued, it's out. I think there's been some response to it, and the position B is do your master plan for all the properties before you pursue this one activity, so...
Yeah, I love the road going into the forest.
Thank you for the nap. You may have to resupply those for appropriate meetings.
I'll try to make sure, as Commissioner Needham asked, requested this in the past, that when we have referrals such as zone change, zone change applications and/or...
Text amendments.
Text amendments, that you have regulations and you have a map in your packet, so that that way you have both of them, you can see the impact.
Yep.
One, we're in town, two, positive effects.
Magnifying glasses.
And I'll try to give, I'll try to give you a little better quality printing. I'm sorry, this is...
This is helpful, I think.
But didn't we just get the, I mean, I have two of these now. This was in, already in my...
Holly's got the better quality right there.
This one?
Give it up.
Well, no, I was thinking, oh, yeah, I see what you mean.
It's grainier, that's...
But you passed this out before. I brought this with me tonight. I see, this is what you were saying about...
Yeah, I'm sorry that the copy that's in front... Yeah, I'm sorry that the copy that's in front of me is really grainy. That's why I brought my computer.
Okay, any other general commission business?
Hazard mitigation plan set for, there's a public information session scheduled for Thursday night in the snow. If anyone wants to go to attend, five thirty, six thirty at West Hartford Town Hall.
Say it again, this is a--
Hazard mitigation plan.
Hazard mitigation.
For the, for the region. The, the draft plan is out. The plan itself will be presented Thursday night.
At the Regional Planning Commission meeting?
It's in the, it's, all I, all I have information, it's a Thursday night, five thirty, six thirty.
Oh, five thirty to six thirty.
At West Hartford Town Hall. If you want to trek it in the snow.
It's really snowing.
Supposedly.
Because there's a Regional Planning Commission meeting at seven that night, same, same place.
Same place.
So it's the same people.
Dreaming of a white Thanksgiving.
Syracuse just got like a foot. Until you get a foot, it isn't snowing.
Three to five.
Okay, then.
Is that what you're saying, really? Oh, I didn't know.
Any update on staffing? Staffing, your staffing.
So we interviewed a candidate for the assistant town planner position today, and we're waiting to talk to the town manager and possible next step with that position, so, yes, it's moving forward.
Okay.
Okay, that's the end of our agenda.
Motion to adjourn?
We have a motion to adjourn, do I have a second?
I second.
So Dave Bloome made a motion, and Holly Bem seconded. All in favor of adjourning the meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously, meeting adjourned at seven thirty-one.